Order. Good evening, Councilmember McCullough, would you like to offer the Pledge of Allegiance or a prayer?
We'll go pledge.
Okay. We can all please rise and Councilmember McCullough will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember McCullough. Good evening and welcome to the November 4, 2020, Study Session of Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,909th Regular Meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, November 16, 2020. I believe we have lost Councilmember Donavick, who is serving on active duty and deployed in the Middle East.
Madam President, don't, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I know this is not, but don't you just love it when people use the, "I'm sorry, I'm overseas defending freedom" excuse?
I know, I know. People will do anything to get out, to be able to miss a meeting, right? I don't believe we have any special groups in the audience. The only announcement that I have to make, which I will make a very short version of what I announced in the regular meeting, congratulations and many thanks to our city clerk, Susan Nash, her extraordinary team, all the volunteers from the city of Livonia who helped with processing 40,000 ballots over the last 24 hours. That's, that's twice our normal volume of ballots. And the unofficial results of Livonia's unofficial results are posted on our website. They're unofficial until they're certified by the Wayne County Board of Canvassers. Does anyone from the council have any announcements that they'd like to make? Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You make wonderful points, thanking our clerk and the team here in our city. I also think that we need to thank all the voters that came out, both in their absentees as well as at the polls and voted. Without them, we wouldn't have the work to do and we certainly wouldn't have some of kinds of results and things that happened. So congratulations to everyone that worked yesterday, as you've said, and it, we certainly ran a very good election through our clerk's office and our clerk. Thank you.
Excellent point. Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Anyone else? At this time, we go to the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we'll move ahead with our agenda. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting, this, there will be no votes taken. However, council members will offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may including an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or a city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, November 16, 2020, where they will officially be voted on. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use the raise hand button that you can see on your Zoom screen, or if you're joining us by, only by phone, press star nine on your phone when the item is called and you'll be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience wishing to speak. When you are called upon, please state your name and address for the record so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting. It will also let our audience know and the council members know who is speaking to the item. And with that, we will move ahead with our new business, beginning with item number one. This is a request for a one-year extension of a maintenance agreement with NextGen E9-1-1, Division of Police, for maintenance of the NextGen E9-11s. I got, I'm wondering if that's the E9-911 system for the period of, of 6/15, so June 15, 2020 through June 14, 2021, from budgeted funds. I, I know the chief is with us this evening and I'll see if we can get his connection to work. Good evening, Chief Cade.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. Am I coming through okay? I can't tell on my end.
Perfect.
Yeah, the item before you is a request for your authorization to extend our maintenance agreement with our Public Safety Dispatch Center, the E911 system, for one year. Our current agreement expired June of this year and we're asking for an extension into June of 2021. Should council approve this extension of the maintenance agreement, funds are appropriated for this extension in the Special Account Fund, which is specific to the Public Safety Communication System within the Livonia. So, no general funds are utilized for this. Again, should you approve this, we will continue the agreement with Entrada West Safety Solutions, which has been the provider for us for a number of years. Going into next year, we anticipate an upgrade, a substantial upgrade of the system. Our current 911 system is really combined with Conference of Western Wayne and other standalone public safety answering points in Western Wayne County and really throughout Southeast Michigan, which includes Texas 911 and many other features. But this extension would allow us, this maintenance agreement extension would allow us to continue with this relationship with Entrada and West Safety Solutions to ensure the service provided to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Cade. Council.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Just one question for the chief. Chief, why just one year on this? I noticed our previous one was five years.
What we anticipate is that next year will be coming before you for another, a whole new system, basically, a whole new upgrade. So this is just a really kind of a Band-Aid to keep us going through, to address any kind of issues that might arise over this time period until we're ready to upgrade to the greatest and best that they have to offer at that particular time.
Okay, thanks. I'll offer an approving for consent, there's no objection.
Okay. Anyone have any objections? All right, seeing none, no one from the audience wishes to comment. Chief, that'll be placed on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, item number two is a request to approve an increase in compensation for the superintendent of Parks and Recreation. This comes to the Department of Civil Service to be in the same compensation range as other directors in the city. And I believe we have Ms. Denise Mayer with us, the Director of HR and, and Head of the Civil Service Department, and we have a Civil Service Commission, who would like to explain this item to us. Good evening, Ms. Mayer.
Good evening, Council President and council members. Now that I've figured out how to raise my hand, I was, I was in the last meeting, but I kept speaking to you and no one would respond, so, because I hadn't raised my hand. I apologize. But the item that's before you this evening from the Civil Service Commission is part of a reorganization plan that was implemented at the city. And what we are looking for is your approval of an increase, actually a modification to the compensation range for the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation position due to the increased responsibilities this position has been assigned as part of the reorganization. This is not, this request is not unprecedented. It, it was equivalent to the compensation change that was made when our Planning Director took on the Economic Development Responsibilities, I'm sorry, yes, our Planning Director, and became the Economic Development and Planning Director. And you have the, you have the different, the different salary ranges in front of you. It's not a, it's not a new salary range, it's a salary range that's currently in effect for the Finance Director, the Economic and Planning Director, and there's one other position that's escaping me right now. Oh, I'm sorry, the Director of Public Work. So it's not a brand-new compensation range, it is in place right now. So it's, and it's due to the, as I mentioned, increase in responsibilities as part of the reorganization.
Thank you. Council, yes, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, all the words and attributes Denise gave to the new position, so to speak, are well-read and well-studied in the information, and I would like to offer an approving resolution as such. Thank you.
All right, council. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I concur with the motion offered by Ms. Toy. I think it's important here to note that although this is an adjustment due to new responsibilities, those including overseeing the Senior Center, Greenmead, with this new organization, or reorganization rather, that's taking place in the last couple of months, to be quite frank with you, I think the Superintendent of Parks and Rec was probably underpaid before those responsibilities were added. If you, if you look at the person who's currently in that role, obviously Ted Davis is doing an excellent job, but taking him out of it personally, the person who has those roles as the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation is really the face of Livonia in so many different ways and has so many different programs that impact our residents on such a extreme level. We should be compensating this person more for the time and the effort that they're putting forth and the vast responsibilities that they have, now of course, but even before this took place. And the same is true for the Assistant Superintendent that will be coming up as the next agenda item as well. So I think this is a good move, I support it, and I think having it in line with the other department heads is absolutely appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly, anyone else? All right, I'm sorry, Councilmember Toy, is that offered for consent?
Yes, ma'am, if that works for you, yes.
All right, I don't believe we have any objections, we'll put it on consent agenda. Next is item number three, is a request to improve increase in compensation for the Assistant Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. This comes to us also from the Department of Civil Service to be within the same range as the Assistant Planning Director. Ms. Mayer.
Thank you, Madam President. As Councilmember Jolly mentioned, this is for the Assistant Superintendent of Parks and Rec, who is also, as part of this reorganization, increasing, the position is, has increased responsibilities, increased direct reports, and this request came from the Superintendents of Park and Recreation, and it has moved through the Commission and they have submitted it to you for your review and approval.
Councilmember Jolly.
I'll offer an approving for consents with the same rationale I previously stated. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like to add something here. I'm happy to see that we, that we are working to ensure that the leadership of the Parks and Recreation Department, which is now expanded to include the Senior Center and Greenmead, and I'm, I'm not sure, maybe I'm just forgetting what the, what the new title is of that department or the descriptor of that department. But while we're doing that, I also think it's appropriate that we look at the compensation down the line of the other members of the, the staff of that department, and specifically at the Senior Center. I know that we've eliminated a head and conventional wisdom would, over at the Senior Center, and conventional wisdom would say, well, we have a lot less programming because, you know, the, the center's not open like it usually is. We still have a lot of programming going on there. The program that we have requires a lot more communication and a lot more coordination because there are reservations, there are, you know, all sorts of requirements about social distancing, there are just a lot of compliance issues that fall on the staff over there. And again, that they no longer have a head, and it also goes to a quality of work and the ability to find joy in work. And I, I think that people that work for a city, you know, part of it is, when you take a job, you have expectations of how the job's going to be, and that's true. Everyone in the city, everyone in, in every job everywhere has had to cope with changes due to COVID. And, you know, our custodial staff is at extra cleaning, right? Our DPW, everyone's had an extra workload. And that's a shared burden. There's something somewhat unique at the Senior Center, and I think, to a certain extent, probably over at Parks and Rec, but, but I'm not as familiar with the programming over there. And that is, the, the normal activities that they do, that, that really do provide a lot of joy, and those are the celebrations, those are the book clubs, those are a lot of events over there that provide, I think, a lot of intrinsic satisfaction to the staff, that's all gone. And, but again, the primary driver for my request is that we've taken a head out of the department. And, and one other thing I understand and expect that with senior services now belonging to a larger portfolio, that that team is being asked to look at their jobs more broadly and look more broadly at how they can contribute and have, you know, additional, additional perspective as to what goes on in the cities, all the cities' recreational community program. So that was a long explanation, but I, I'd like to, I support this, but I'd like to ask the administration to look at the compensation levels over at the Senior Center. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I'll support Jolly's motion. I don't know if we had a support, but I also wanted to say, in regards to what you've just explained so eloquently, Senior Center is by far, honestly, I mean, we have a lot of good things going on in our community, but I gotta tell you, I serviced in my other elective jobs, four, one, two, three, four, it was a four or five other communities when I was in the Senate. And I, I can't begin to tell you how inventive, how creative, how patient, how unbelievable the, the people that work there and deal with our seniors on different levels. I mean, everything, I, you know, I can't even get to tell you, when I've been over there, some of the issues they've had to deal with. You know, at one time, we had a little problem with some card playing over there, and we also had some problems with some hygiene, some real sensitive issues that I don't think many of us see or would want to see on a daily basis. And I think your points, Madam President, are well-put in regards to what's going on there, as well as with this type of virus situation we're all facing, because they're the most, they're probably the ones that are most affected by it in our community, not that we all aren't, but I mean, because of their age, because of some of their health conditions, things like that, I guess I can start relating to some of this. No, but anyhow, in all seriousness, your points are well-taken, and I'd, I'd like to see some opinions on that as well, in some compensation. So to your point, Madam Chair, and thank you for bringing it up, and obviously thanks to Jim for his support on that assistant as well, but, you know, and I don't want to behoove other departments, because then we get into a lot of comparisons, and I don't want to do that, but I think, I think some of these points that have been brought up by you and others have been just excellent. And just in my own experience, living in this community for this many years and, and going over there quite a bit, you can see some of the unbelievable kinds of things that they deal with on, you know, a daily basis as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Anyone else? All right, I believe we put that on the consent agenda, Ms. Mayer, so thank you, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Item number four, is a request for new city liability and property insurance coverage. This comes to us from the Department of Finance with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, known as MMRMA, for the period from December 1st through November 30, 2020. Good evening, Mr. Slater.
Good evening, council. As you indicated before you tonight, is a request for renewal of our property liability insurance through the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. We've been longtime members of that organization and they've provided outstanding services to us at really a value price. The renewal for next year, the quote was for $1,207,166. However, as has happened for a number of years now, that cost is offset by a net asset distribution. For next year, the amount is going to be $958,035. So the net cost is, is very low to us. And as I said, in terms of the risk control services, their claims administration, and a whole bunch of other services they provide to us other than just paying for our claims, they've been outstanding organization. So with that, I'd be happy to offer, to answer any questions, but our recommendation is to renew as described. Thank you.
Council, Councilmember White.
Through the chair to Mike, I don't give any objection to the renewal, but I note that it's a two-year period. Is that normally what we do as opposed to one year?
Yes, we've asked for two years for, as long as I can remember.
Okay, thank you. I'll offer a resolution to approve this and ask that it be placed on consent, if there's no objection.
All right. I see no objections, I see no one from the audience who wishes to comment on this. Moving along, item number six is a request to accept quotation for workers' compensation insurance. This comes to us from the Department of Finance with the ASU Group to provide claims administration services, and with Midwest Employers Casualty Company to provide excess insurance coverage when losses from any one claim reaches $600,000 from the, for, for the period of December 1st, 2022, November 30, 2022.
Did you skip number five?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did skip number five. All right, we'll jump back to number five. This is a request for approval of budget adjustments for the fiscal year ending November 30, 2020, coming to us from the Department of Finance for additional contributions to the Viva Funding and Building Improvement Capital Funds Project. And in parentheses, it says 418. So I don't know if that's maybe our, the project number or the budget number, the line item. Mr. Slater.
Well, to answer your first question, that's a fund number, that's the Building Improvement Capital Projects Fund. What we've brought before you tonight is a request to move some money around within the budget. We've done a review of the budget-to-actual comparison for our current fiscal year to date, and we've identified areas where our results have been favorable, and these funds can be reallocated for other purposes. The total amount that we're talking about reallocating here is a little over $4 million, and it comes from a variety of sources, as you can see in the communications. By far, the biggest item among this list of items is the CARES Act grant revenue that we've received, which is just under $2.9 million. And then various other categories, the LCSA revenue, SALTAR revenue, youth assistance, telephone expenses, less than expected, and then the reduction in seasonable, seasonal labor due to COVID this year. The last item, which really is not reallocation, but it's additional appropriation and acknowledgement, is something that's been discussed previously, that was the $50,000 gift from Masco, which we're proposing be used for the diversity inclusion in unconscious bias training going forward.
Mr. Slater, I'm having, I don't know if it's just me, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you.
Might be just you.
Okay. Sorry.
I'll try to speak a little bit louder. So, in regards to the $4 million that we, that I initially described, our proposal is to take that and reallocate it to two different places. Fifty percent of it would be allocated to an additional contribution to our Viva Fund, which is the retiree healthcare trust fund. That fund is currently $95 million unfunded, and so this would cut into that a little bit. And the other $2 million we're proposing would be moved to the Building Improvement Capital Projects Fund, and that fund was established a few years ago in order to set money aside for future building improvements, which we know we're going to need to deal with aging city buildings. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam President.
Oh, yes, Vice President Barr.
No question, just a comment. I, I'm really pleased with this. Had some conversation with Mr. Slater about this leading up to this meeting, and I was, as I, as I expressed when we talked about the budget, either the last meeting or the meeting before, I, one of my disappointments, which would, with an overall really good budget, was that we hadn't allocated money in that budget for the Building Capital Improvement Fund, and I accepted the explanation that was given for that, but I am really thrilled that we're putting some money towards that here. And then also the Viva, one of the things I mentioned, Mr. Slater, when he and I were talking about this, is I said, I, I love both of these uses for this windfall, it's not a windfall, but it, for this found money, so much that my, my biggest struggle with this is whether we should be putting 100% of the funds into one of those two funds. And so when you're struggling with that, I guess it makes sense to split it down the middle, but, you know, the last few years, we've done a, I, I've really appreciated this council's focus on, on boosting funding for the Viva to get ahead of that, and this continues that. I just, I just think this is a great use of this money. So I, maybe there's other comments, but I'd offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you. Anyone have any objections, additional questions? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, we'll place that on the consent agenda. Thank you. All right, now we're to number six. This is a request to accept a quotation for the workers' compensation insurance. This comes to us from the Department of Finance with the ASU Group to provide claims administration services, and with the West Employers Casualty Company to provide excess insurance coverage when losses from any one claim reaches $600,000 from the period of December 1st, 2020 through November 30, 2022. Mr. Slater.
Good evening again. This item is to renew our workers' compensation, excess insurance, and claims administration services, which expire November 30 of this year. In regards to the claims administration services, the recommendation is to enter into a contract with the ASU Group for a total premium of $35,500 per year. That's a current, that's a decrease from our current cost of around 10%, so that's a good thing. The city's longtime provider, which was York Risk Services, was purchased by an outfit called Sedgwick in 2019. Since then, they've had many staff defections and very poor service to the city. So we're happy to be looking at other alternatives here. And the Civil Service Department, who is the primary interface with the claims administrator, conducted interviews with four different providers, and the AS Group, ASU Group was the recommended firm. In regards to the excess insurance, which is the insurance that pays claims once they reach a certain level, in this case over $600,000, the solicited quotes for that also, and the recommendation is to enter into a contract with Midwest Employers Casualty Company, again for coverage when any claim reaches an excess of $600,000, and the total estimated annual premium for that is $163,234. That's an increase over our current rate of 12%. With that, I have any questions?
Council? Anyone? All right, Councilmember White.
I'll offer an approving on consent, if there's no objection.
All right, thank you. Any concerns with that? Any comments, questions, anyone from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move ahead to number seven. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
This is a request for authorization to purchase one 2021 Freightliner cab and chassis to be built as a Vector truck through the Sourcewell, formerly NJPA Purchase Agreement. This comes to us from the Public Service Division as a replacement vehicle to be used by the water and sewer departments from budgeted funds. Good evening, I'm not sure who's handling this item.
Hi, good evening, Jacob Rushlow, Superintendent of Public Service, Department of Public Works. And thank you, Madam President, for that introduction of this item. So the Vector truck that we're looking to purchase is a replacement of an existing Vector truck in our fleet. And thank you, Madam President, for that introduction of this item. So the Vector truck that we're looking to purchase is a replacement of an existing Vector truck in our fleet that is outdated and has really surpassed its life expectancy. And that truck will be disposed of through the auction process. The Vector truck is really a multi-faceted piece of equipment. It's used in the sewer division for routine preventative maintenance and cleaning of sewer pipes, as well as assisting with water main breaks and utility service locating through hydro excavation. Funding was previously approved in the DPW capital outlay budget. And as you had mentioned, pricing for this was set through the Sourcewell purchasing agreement, which saves the city just over $10,500 through that purchasing group. With that, it's our recommendation through the division that council proceed to authorize the purchase of this freightliner model 11-4 SD cab and chassis to be built as a Vector truck from Jack Dohany Supplies or Companies in the amount of $448,520.45. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Counsel, uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, it's coming from budgeted funds. It's cooperative purchasing agreement. And Vector trucks are probably one of the hardest working vehicles we have in our fleet, considering some of the stuff that it does. So everything looks in order. I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent.
Thank you. Counsel, anyone object to that? Any questions? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, we'll place that on the consent agenda. Thank you. Item number eight is request to amend the contract with OHM Advisors and authorize appropriation expenditure. This comes from the Public Service Division for the 2021 Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, known as DWSRF, Water Main Projects, Project 7453, to ensure a one to provide engineering, design, administration, and soils investigation services from budgeted funds. And this is Council Resolution 365-16.
Good evening, Madam President. Engineering Division will handle this one. How you doing, council members? As you're aware, this is, I believe, our fifth continuous of the Dwarf, now DWSRF State Revolving Funds, an opportunity to upgrade our infrastructure, water main infrastructure. As you recall, we've been down to Coventry Gardens, Old Willdell, Old Willdell Gardens, Eight Mile. And we've been over now into Section 35 and gonna be finishing those up next year. So this is an opportunity for us to continue this program with OHM Advisors, who's been handling this since 2014, has been successful. We're asking for $5.3 million of water main improvements. And this portion will handle designs in project areas four, five, and six that was approved back in 2019 with the priority project plan with Eagle. And where we'll be looking at to do improvements is going to be in Section 1 on Angling, Antego, Deering Bridge, Rensselaer, and St. Francis. We also be looking to do improvements in Section 12 on Floral and Lathers. And again, in Section 12 on Goff and Pershing Streets. We're asking for your approval tonight in the amount of $307,000 for OHM Advisors. Jessica Katers and her team to continue on with getting design plans completed or submitted to Eagle to meet the milestones that have been approved and set by Eagle and looking for construction in 2022. Be happy, happy to answer any questions you may have, and also have Jessica Katers as part of the attendees tonight. If there's any specific questions, we can answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Again, before we go to counsel, I, I just wanted to, to say that one of the things, and I made this note with other, other companies that we do business with, is, is always appreciated when they make their senior people available for our study meetings, to be available. If we have any questions, we generally don't, but it is appreciated that they always provide their members from their leadership team. And no matter how late the meetings, no matter where they are now, I guess it's a little bit easier through Zoom, but it's, it's appreciated. I made that comment about AW before OHM. I know others do it too, but it's just appreciated. So, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll offer an approving for the consent agenda. Uh, this is an item that we've been accustomed to seeing as a council and as a city. We, as you just mentioned, we obviously know some of the personalities involved. And we know OHM Advisors is a great partner of the city. When we're talking about the Dwarf project, you know, Jessica Katers really deserves a big shout out. This is really her baby on the, uh, on the side of OHM, and she is a resident. And I, I think she takes great pride in doing this work for her city as well. Uh, so we thank her and we congratulate her for the success we've had so far and look forward to going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll place that on consent. Item number nine, this is a request to rescind Council Resolution 230-20, which accepted a public utility easement for sanitary sewer easement at 31800 Enterprise Drive in the south half of Section 27, and have the utility service remain private. This comes to us from the Engineering Division. This is a request from the owner of Levonia Estates Limited for the sanitary sewer to remain private.
Madam President, City Council Members, I hate to do this, but unfortunately, they changed their mind on keeping their sewer private. You're gonna balk at it. Obviously, if we want to bring up a public sewer main, we want to make sure we have it up to our standards and specifications. So again, we walk away little or low maintenance to the system itself. So they've done a great job over there on a development there off of west of Merriman Road and north of Plymouth on their development over the last several years. So we appreciate all the investment they've done to those buildings over three phases with Ovek and Frous, and just looking for your approval to rescind the easement that was supposed to be public, did not get recorded down in Wayne County. This is so much the next item that you'll be talking about, but again, it's just a bit of housekeeping. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel? Counsel?
Madam President. Sorry, I was fumbling from my mute button. I'd offer, I'd offer approving for consent if there's no objection on this.
All right, I don't, I see no objections. I don't think anyone from the audience wishes to comment. So we will place it on the, um, on the consent agenda. Number 10 is request to rescind Council Resolution 231-20, which accepted a public utility easement for sanitary sewer easement at 11870 Hubbard Road in the south half of Section 27, and have the utility service remain private. This also comes to us from the Engineering Division from request, upon request from the owner Levonia Estates Limited for the sanitary sewer to remain private. Mr. Zalinsik.
Again, same explanation as before in the previous item, just again, housekeeping to make sure we get it clear that we're not accepting the public easement for us to take future maintenance. When they're gonna make it private, they're gonna have their own liability to maintain that certain segment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, uh, Councilmember White.
I'll offer approving and consent.
Thank you. Does anyone have any objections to that? Anyone in the audience? Seeing no one, we'll place that on the consent agenda, Mr. Zalinsik. Thank you very much. And finally, item 11 is a proposed 2021 council meeting schedule. This comes to us from the City Council President in accordance with provisions of the Open Meeting Act, which is 1976 Public Act 267 as amended. Counsel, and I, I believe that, uh, Mr. Barr had a suggest, uh, wanted to modify, suggested for modifying.
Yeah, if, if no one has objection, and it's not a big deal if somebody does, but if no one has objection, I'd suggest doing our first meeting on Wednesday, January 6th versus Monday, the 4th. It just offers a little bit more scheduling flexibility for families coming out of the break. But, but again, if there's any strong objection to that, I won't push it.
Are there any objections? All right, and I had sent an email earlier today suggesting that we shift the November 2021 meeting, the current proposed meeting, to Wednesday, November 3rd. That's the day after the election, understanding it's not a federal election, but a city election. And everyone's generally busy and I'm pretty tired on the day after. And Monday, November, and, and then the following, Monday, November 15th, I propose we shift this to Monday, the 8th of November, and Monday, the 22nd of November. That is the Monday before Thanksgiving. But, um, you know, I, I don't know if, if that's generally a travel week for people. First, I'll go to Councilmember Toy, and then to Councilmember Jolly. Councilmember Toy.
Madam Chair, I think both your suggestions are, you know, within reason, if you will, and I think it's a good idea. I think we're all exhausted the day after elections. And next year, if I remember correctly, is a city election. So some of us will probably be more tired than others of us. But, um, yes, I think it's a great idea both, uh, Councilman Barr and yourself have. Oh, I concur.
And just one other thing, it gives the clerk's office a little bit of breathing room, too. Uh, you know, they come off literally 48 hours of work and have to go right into a, a council meeting. Certainly. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't necessarily have strong opinions. I like Scott's suggestion. I, the suggestion that you make, I, I don't necessarily have strong opinions on either. But I believe it, it has been a longstanding tradition to have a city council meeting the day following an election. I, I think Kathy might be laughing here, smiling. I, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I think going back many, many, many years, it's always been a tradition to have a meeting the following day. So I just wanted to point that out.
Madam President.
Oh, yes, Vice President Barr.
I, I have a comment about that, but first a question for Jim. Is that, are you serious? Like, i- i- is it your understanding that we've purposely done it that way, or is it just?
Uh, you know, maybe.
I, I don't know.
Maybe Councilmember Toy could shed some light on this with her experience. But, uh, my understanding is going back many, many, many years, that's been the case. Uh, so maybe Laura wants to chime in.
It, you know, it has been, if I may, Councilman Jolly, Councilman Barr. You know, it doesn't mean you can't break it, but it, yeah, we have had that.
So, so my, okay, I, I, I didn't realize that. I just figured it was always a coincidence of the, of the scheduling. But, um, is there, is there anything that keeps us from having meetings in consecutive weeks? I know we have to have two per month, but I'm just wondering. I, I like Kathleen's idea of avoiding after-election day, but if we could, for one time, do it in consecutive weeks, that would just keep that Thanksgiving week open for people. For, for the record, I don't think I have a problem being there on, on that week of Thanksgiving. But if there's nothing illegal about that, maybe just make a one-time exception and do meetings in consecutive weeks.
No, it's, it's up to us. We're required to have two regular meetings in, in a, each calendar month. We can do it, have to do that. And I, I, I knew that we'd always done it on the Wednesday. Traditionally, the reason we had not done it on the Monday was because the city council chambers were always used for ballots. And no one could be in here except the clerk's office personnel. So, and, and I thought the tradition, if you will, arose from the fact that our cadence is usually the first and third weeks of the month. And so, you know, if you, if you would normally have it on the Monday night, you can have it on the Monday night, but Wednesday's our other general night for meetings, and that's why it was held on Wednesday.
Well, I, I see Todd's got his hand up, but I'll just finish this comment and turn over the floor. I, I guess my suggestion would be, be considered doing what Kathleen said and postponing that first, so first one to, what, the 12th or whatever it was? But then just turning around the following Monday and, and, and doing it again. We fulfill our requirement for the month. We keep away from Election Day and Thanksgiving week. So that's a thought.
What, what I, is that we don't place this on the regular. I, I would like to ask Sarah and the clerk's office, because the, the new Civic Clerk software has also changed preparation of the agendas and the materials, and find out if that gives everyone sufficient turnaround time. Okay, Mr. Zalinsik.
You just hit the nail on the head. I was gonna talk about just to, you know, having the time to turn stuff around instead of having Z items or X items at the very end for a consecutive week. So you already got it figured out. I just wanted to reiterate that point. Thanks.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. One thing, as Mr. Zalinsik just mentioned, when we were changing, uh, some of you were not, but when we were changing these meetings, we used to have, you know, our agenda items got a little slim back, you know, then. And we'd be on the meeting and we'd be off, and people would say, where's it at? And, uh, so we decided to condense it down and put both meetings, one at 7, one at 8. That met with some pushback from some council members. But over time, I think it's done itself well. I was a strong proponent of that. I think it was President of Council that had brought it up. But others followed. I think Jim McCam was on. I think our mayor was on then, and a few others. You know, so you do gotta be a little careful, but your points are well taken. I, I don't see any harm in that. It's totally up the seven of us. Yeah.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'll offer a resolution that we take your schedule, change January 4th to January 6th, and adopt the change that you suggested in November, and leave that on the regular. And then we can figure out some of the details over the next couple of weeks.
All right. Any objections from the audience? None? That's it. We will go back to, that's our last agenda item. We'll go back to the audience. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Toy.
I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, and I probably should have done this at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I've had a few interesting thoughts as we look at different things that are happening in our community. And one being, we used to have, and I think we still do, and I didn't get time to research it today because the day after the election, and we were all active and involved in things. Um, but it's the grid, the city grid. So that when different entities come to the city, wanna use some of our properties for various kinds of activities, if you will, like Spree, for example. We charge them for various things that they do at Spree. And while we didn't have Spree this year because of the virus, et cetera, that way, people are clear when they come forward, and they know the different charges that are gonna be met out. And, and lately, I think we have groups that wanna start using some other city facilities here and there. And I wanna be fair to them and fair to us, that we are getting dollars back for that. So I'd like to ask Madam President, if the council would so endure, that we look at that grid again and make sure it's up to date and make sure that, um, you know, the word gets out that, you know, we're not giving away various city services, et cetera, for free, while we welcome them and let's help them in any way we can. I know that Councilman Freenstrom worked very hard on that at the time, and Councilman Taylor, to draw back onto some older names, but they were well-meaning on it. And I think it is, I think it's still a good idea. And maybe Councilwoman White would remember that being one of our outstanding city attorneys in those days. But I, I bring that up for your consideration as we move forward. And maybe it should be put in the infrastructure or capital, what is it, capital outlay? Committee possibly, Madam Chair. And so I'd like to offer that tonight for your consideration, just at least for a committee to start looking at it a little bit stronger, if you will. Thank you.
Would you like to offer, would you like to offer a resolution, then, that we put on the next regular meeting to refer? Committees, it would be, um, you know, committee of the whole, you know, economic development, strategic planning, uh, technology. I'm, I'm not sure where you would like that.
Whatever's deemed appropriate, Madam Chair. I'm not sure what kinds of things are in each one of those committees and what they have. You know what I mean? That may be, um, this, this is, you know, with the holidays and other things coming up, this is getting more urgent as time goes on, I think, or, you know, should be looked at. I, I'd leave it.
Perhaps maybe committee of the whole, and I can't.
Committee of the whole, probably, yeah.
I can't remember off the top of my head what the ordinance says. I don't know if Kathy or Paul or anybody else knows. Council has some role in approval of, I don't know if it's all of the, um, the rental fees. I, I think greenmead fees we have to approve changes in. You know, that, that would probably, time to review all of that.
Right, right. There's a whole grid. There used to be. I don't know.
I think we still have it. Mr. Burnier.
Yeah. There, there is obviously involvement for council. We've actually been having Ted Davis and I had some conversations on that. And we were gonna probably approach council on something on that matter. So somebody, Councilmember Toy kinda read our minds on that.
Sorry.
No, no, it's absolutely perfect. But there, there is going to be something presented to council in the very near future on these items you're talking about. So it might be, you know, I don't hesitate to tell council or suggest to council, it might be worth your while to wait until we present what we're gonna present fairly soon for your consideration. And then you may wanna put it into whatever committee you wanna put it into, or in a study committee. The study meeting.
Counsel, uh, Councilmember Toy, since you were gonna offer the resolution.
Uh, just, you know what? I appreciate our attorney's advice on that. But I'd still like to see us study it a bit in committee of the whole, because there's, there can be some sensitive issues going on on that as well, as I recall from when we initially did it, and perhaps because it was new. But it might be whoofus to, to at least have the subject matter in committee of the whole.
And, I'm sorry, in?
Committee of the whole, then.
All right. Do you wanna, do you wanna offer the resolution now, or do we wanna? Do you want to, do you want to offer the resolution now, or do we want to do that after?
After, what's that?
After Paul and Ted Davis bring it to council.
That's fine. What, what, that's fine, right after they bring it in. Sure. That's fine.
To offer that as the response that they're bringing it to us. Is that what?
Yeah, that's fine, Madam President.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, that is, that's great. Like, there, it should be coming, a matter should be coming to council very soon on this issue.
Okay. All right. I, I think that's excellent, excellent point, Councilwoman Toy. Thank you for bringing that up. So we will not offer a resolution, you, you're not offering a resolution now, we'll wait until it's, it's by Ted and Paul. All right. Anything else? Go back to the audience. Seeing no one. With that, we are adjourned at 9:30. Thank you, everyone. Good night, Levonia. And thank you, cable TV, and thank you, Casey.